I'm calling to all of this meeting of the Silver City Town Council. Would you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome, everybody. Glad you could be here tonight. The next item on the agenda is Changes to the Agenda. Do any of the councilors want to make changes to the agenda? Councilor Bederson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I move to move New Business Item 11A, Approval/Disapproval of Resolution Number 2019-10 for the Acceptance and Approval of the Fiscal Year 2018 Audit Report to under Council Comments, after Council Comments, so that Mr. Stone can get home to the family.
Okay, we have a motion to move Agenda Item 11A to right below Counselor's Comments. Do I hear a second? Counselor Amy Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm taking the motion.
With motion and a second, any discussion?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. The Agenda Item is moved. The next item on the agenda is Council Comments. Counselor Ray, your time to go first.
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome back. Been a long month and glad to see you right here. Anyway, I have a few things to say and one of them is that when now, I know there's been quite a few people have been concerned about people running red lights. I think that if we pause a second or so before we take off, it would help alleviate some of the problems that we have here. Also, people need to understand that we are not, the public is not allowed to walk on streets or highways. If there is a sidewalk, people are going to get hurt doing that. I want to thank Mr. Brown and I want to thank the town of Silver City, Mr. Peter Peñal, DeMarcio, and Eric from the Streets Department. Today, they went up to the memorial at Baton Park and they put the tank in the Baton Park and they did a very big favor and that tank signifies more for our memorial and for bear. Again, thank you guys and it was very, very well received from all the veterans and they told us to tell, they told me to tell you guys thank you. It's a 142 duster. And with that, welcome back and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Amy Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two brief things that I want to talk about. First of all, I too want to thank the Town Manager, Mr. Brown, and the contract journalist, Lisa Jimenez, and the Daily Press for the work that they've been doing, publishing various informative articles about our town. The one that just appeared about the library was really very well written, very well done. So I just want to thank you. Thank you, all of you guys. And I want to put a shout out to the students from Western. I never saw so many big football players who came out and worked on the World Water Day and cleaned out various portions of the big ditch. That was a collaborative project with Chris and of course, that was Chris Minnich's department. So I just want to say thank you to the volunteer crew who was down there scouring the ditch and pulling out all about the plastic bottles. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Bederson?
Thank you, Mayor. We do not have a meeting, we canceled a meeting in March so that several of us can do several things that we were doing. And one of the things that I was doing is I was at the National League of Cities Meeting in Washington DC with folks from the New Mexico Communist League and we met with each one of our representatives, senators, when we were there. And one of the things that we were talking to them about was trying to get a bill that had been put through the House on the federal level to allow municipalities to have their local authority over placing of small cells in right of way because of the recent FCC ruling that prohibits local authority. So just to briefly explain, we've talked about this before, but it's been a while. But what these things are is like, you know, one of those mini fridges, it's not the smallest one, but sort of a little bit taller, can be put anywhere that cell service providers would like to put that. And we think that more people like Comcast and other folks will also want to do that. Every 1,500 feet with, and they don't have to go to the town, they could put it right in front of your business, right in front of your home. They can use local rights of way, state rights of way. We're more concerned with local rights of way. And then there can be a proliferation of these antennas on top of existing poles that we don't own. So the FCC ruled that we cannot say no. The town of Silver City or any municipality across the United States cannot say no to this, that we have a clock that we have to do, that we have to make sure that we accept them, they can put them wherever they want to. One of the concerns that many of us have in New Mexico and across the United States is when we have these local Main Streets that are so beautiful, but we also have sidewalks so that folks that are, that need to have access, there's no way to stop them from preventing, preventing them from putting it so that all of a sudden someone who may be in a wheelchair or use crutches or anything, there's no, they can just put it wherever they want to. So we are still working on that at the, at the national level with the National League of Cities. We're going to continue to try to make sure that we can have some of our local authority back for what we can say about how you can put something like that in a right of way. We don't necessarily want it downtown on our high sidewalks where we already have a lot of things going on. We don't want to block someone's, we don't want them to block someone's business. We don't want it in your, right there in the sidewalk, in front of your house. So that just wanted to let you know that that's really what we worked on and that's what we talked with each one of our legislators who was very supportive of making sure that local authority would be restored. I don't know where it is, it hasn't really moved out of the House. I think that whatever we, whenever it does happen, it may be difficult for it to go through the Senate and if it does get accepted, that we can get some of our local authority back, that it may not be signed into law. So there's a lot of work for us to do and as I get more information, I'll make sure that we do something where folks come right into their legislators and hopefully be able to allow us to work together with these cell providers which are not utilities. So yes, they're not utilities, so they don't pay a franchise fee to use our rights of way. But there's nothing in there in the current FCC ruling that they even have to put things back the way they were. They could leave it a mess. It's a little bit scary right now. So we will continue to work on that at the state level through the New Mexico Communist League, but we'll try to get the information out to you as soon as we can about where it is and how far it's going. Every community in the state of New Mexico is concerned about this, as are folks across the US. And then the last thing I wanted to say is I had a great morning this morning in attending the Ribbon Cutting Celebration on the joint project with Western New Mexico University and the town of Silver City on the College Avenue. And Mr. Brown and the mayor were there as well. It was, it's really beautiful, the shrubs and the trees that, and the flowers are all blooming right now. We have a couple of trees that the university put in that aren't doing anything, so it's a little bit of a worry, they may have to replace them. But it's looking quite beautiful and it's a really wonderful tie-in with the interest of the university, but also encouraging students to walk down or to get down and participate in the town and down the Main Street. So I just wanted to say it was really nice to be there this morning. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Cottone?
Thank you, Mayor. I was having, last week, I talked and several other leaders in town, representatives from Western and the school district and other places, met with the new Secretary of Workforce Solutions, Bill McCamley, and Lieutenant Governor Morales, who was also in town at that point, to discuss the Workforce Solutions Department and how it can be a little bit more effective in Silver City with job placement, with making sure that people know it's even there. The new secretary spoke about our, our new governor's idea is to have all the secretaries in the communities instead of in Santa Fe, so they'll all probably be visiting us in the near future, trying to meet with us and see what we can do and what they can offer us and, you know, we can work together a little bit. Secretary McCamley will be visiting us again shortly to give a presentation for local business owners about the Cliff Effect. The Cliff Effect is now that we're going to have a minimum wage increase, there will be several employees in a lot of different businesses that are, that right now receive either SNAP or housing benefits from the government and also work, but because of that increase, that tiny increase in minimum wage, they won't be qualified for those same benefits. So it'll be about that issue and how his department can help with those employees. So hopefully, all small business owners will be interested in attending that and as he said, I will be announcing when that will be.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Counselor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I've got one thing. Representative Rudy Martinez was the one that attended. And also, I would like to open some discussions to see if we can be able to change our meetings from the daytime, onto the daytime from the nighttime, from night until day. I would like to open some discussions at some point. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Because of a motion made by Counselor Bederson, we will now move to Agenda Item 11A, which is the Approval/Disapproval of Resolution Number 2019-10 for the Acceptance and Approval of the Fiscal Year 2018 Audit. Mr. Brown?
Mayor, Council, I would like to present Mike Stone, Raston McGee, who will talk about our fiscal 2018 Audit.
Oh, Mayor. Mike, could you press that button there on the base of that thing? There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Usually my voice appears good enough without a microphone, but I'll try to speak softly. First of all, when you said Approval/Disapproval, just mark off the disapproval. Let's just get the approval down on this thing. First of all, I'd like to point out that it seems late in the year to be getting the June 30th, 2018 Audit Report. I want to, I want to make everybody aware of the fact that the town of Silver City was compliant in their deadline with the State Auditor's Office, that there's nothing that they did to delay this Audit Report. We had a kind of a perfect storm in Santa Fe. The State Auditor that was, that did not get elected was running for office and so they were kind of preoccupied with that, so nobody was reviewing any Audit Reports. Then, when he got defeated, I think everybody in the office just said, oh, the heck with it. It just kind of threw them all to the side and we didn't start getting Audit Reports reviewed till after the first of the year. And since the towns and municipalities come in later than, say, school districts and stuff like that, they got the back end of it. I just want to make sure that you understand, this was in no way had anything to do with anything that the town of Silver City did. It was just circumstances in Santa Fe. Okay. Okay, as to your Audit Report, you have an unmodified opinion on your Audit Report, which is as high an opinion as we can give. It says that we believe that the financial statements as presented are fairly stated. That's important, important to you for bonding capacity, it's important to you particularly for grants and those sort of things. As money gets tighter and tighter, people look for more and more ways to eliminate people and one of the things they have used over the last few years is audits. Luckily, the town of Silver City hasn't been in a position to have any of those kind of problems and they don't this year. Basically, we had one comment and that comment was, is that we would like to see the utility billing department be able to lock their drawers when they had to get up and leave their station. There was not currently a locking device on there. We had this meeting and Counselor Ray attended for us. We had to have a councilperson there and so that was back in early December. And my guess is that those locking devices have been, have already been put in place a long, for a long time now, I'd be my guess.
I'll be, please.
Okay. So basically, that comment has already been cured. One thing I want to make very clear related to this comment, very clear, there is no indication that any money went anywhere. There is no missing money. There have been some misinterpretations of some previous audits in terms of what was said in the media. I think it's very important to stress, no money left anywhere, no money was gone, okay? We didn't, the town of Silver City didn't get pilfered, okay? What basically happened is we've got some locking drawers so the ladies can get up and move around, use the facilities, whatever they need to do. We already had, as you all know, we already had screens so that they could not, their cash drawers cannot be reached by the public. However, there is some, there is some traffic behind their stations from other town personnel and just in the interest of safety, it's just better if they can lock their drawers. That's the only comment we had related to the entire operation in the town of Silver City. I think if I was sitting up there, the most important thing that I would want to know is are the numbers we're getting for budget, for expenditures, are those numbers good numbers to allow us to manage the town? And I can tell you, at least through June 30th of 18, we didn't have any problem with those numbers at all. Now, I don't know if Alex has slid off since then or his staff has slid off since then, but as of June 30th, 18, we didn't have any problems. That's basically I have, the only thing I have, unless you guys have any questions, I would remind you, it is an action item, we need to take action on it, to either accept or not accept. If you don't accept, I don't know what we're going to do because I don't have time to go back in there right now, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Stone. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mrs. Stone. Does council have any questions or comments? Counselor Bederson?
Thank you very much and I want to thank our staff in the Finance Department, they're sitting back there, and Alex for all you do to ensure that we're compliant and that we get it on the file report, so.
Thank you. I do want to, Amanda, Anita, Vanessa, I didn't see anybody else, but from the staff, but they do an excellent job. I, I'm just around to answer questions, they do all the work.
Alex, would you have them stand and introduce each one?
Okay. You guys want to stand up? So you've got Amanda, Accounting Finance Clerk, Anita, the Deputy Finance Director, and Vanessa, the new Purchasing Agent. Thank you all. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions or comments from the council? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Amy Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am moved to approve Resolution Number 2019-10 for the Acceptance and Approval of the Fiscal Year 2018 Audit.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counselor Bederson?
Mr. Ray, I second the motion as stated.
Thank you. Any discussion? Full call, please, ma'am.
Counsel, Counsel Bederson?
Aye.
Counselor Amy Smith?
Aye.
Counselor Ray?
Aye.
Counsel Cottone?
Aye.
Motion carries. And Adam Smith? Thank you, Mrs. Stone.
Thank you, ma'am. And I do appreciate you moving me out. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Going back to the regular flow of the agenda, next item is Approval of Minutes of the February 26, 2019 Regular Meeting. Do I hear a motion? Counselor Amy Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of the town of Silver City of February 26, 2019.
Thank you. Is there a second? Counselor Bederson?
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is Public Input. I see that three people signed up. First was Kenneth Sexton.
Yes, I'm Kenneth Sexton, resident and--
Thank you. Please push the button. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm a citizen of Silver City, Grand County, and also represent the Grand County Beekeepers. I'm addressing or asking some questions for clarification of ordinance number 1277. Many towns across the United States use a nuisance ordinance to manage the concerns of bees in town, honeybees in town limits. So our question was, several questions, would this ordinance, the number 1277, be used to address the concerns of honeybees, which are animals and they can bite, in addition to stinging?
Mr. Sexton, excuse me for a minute. I'll let you go on in a minute, but if you'll address us in terms of just what your concerns are, if you have questions, you'll have to contact one of the members of the council later.
This is on the agenda. This ordinance is on the agenda at the moment. So maybe you could ask them.
Yeah, would you like to wait until we get to that item on the agenda?
Yes, of course. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Next on the, who's next signed up was Robert Donnelly?
Mr. Mayor, council, and everybody else. My name is Robert Donnelly. I've been a citizen, a resident of Silver City for nearly 10 years and one of the reasons I enjoyed being here was the openness of the meetings and I want to just say that I come up here mainly to keep that door open for the citizen input because I'm noticing that possibly that could close down if there was no input. Fortunately, we have a couple of, some other people, so I won't take a lot of time. But I do, I do want to make a comment on Counselor Bederson's story about the federal, FAA, is it, it's FCC, yeah, it's creeping in and we all have to be diligent and it creeps in from all angles. So thank you for your diligence and just to keep everybody aware that we have to have as much input as we can. I'm interested in the, the approval of the ordinance tonight on 1277 and when the question came up about bees, I'll be interested to hear how that's dealt with. I'm sure that there's going to be a lot of discussion about that. And the other thing is just a comment that we're talking about the seven parties at the, at the end of the, and we've got here, New Business, there's seven celebrations there. That means that the town of Silver City is a party town. I like that. And that's pretty much all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you. Sharon McDonough?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Town Council and everyone else who has come tonight. I would like to, I am here to ask for approval of ordinance 1277 and I do have personal experience with this. I've been a resident for 11 years. I live on College Avenue, very close to the university, but I can wait until we are discussing that particular ordinance. Shall we wait?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is Reports. First report is by our interim Police Chief Portillo, kind of report on uncovered loads.
Mayor, council, good evening. I wanted to do a report on the uncovered, unsecured loads. Before I begin into the statistics, I just want to remind the public, community, if they see an uncovered load, I encourage you, you can also contact Central Dispatch, 388-8840 to report that. There's other officers that can enforce it, not just a community resource officer, so again, contact Central Dispatch, 388-8840 to report that. Some of the stats from January of this year till now, we have issued 38 citations for unsecured and uncovered loads. This includes about approximately nine written warnings of uncovered loads. What I want to bring up the written warnings is I have our community resource officer, Manny Howdy, here and he's going to go into certain situations that he's encountering out in the field and educating the public with and I'll let him get into that here in a minute. We're also going to talk about maybe some pamphlets and poster boards that we're still working on that he'll go ahead and explain. There's also a program that we discussed with Judge Lanny from magistrate court. What she's wanting is there's a lot of community resource hours that people need to get done and to help the community and pick up some of the trash. She's, we're willing to work with her, she's willing to work with us. Where Officer Howdy can actually supervise maybe twice a month to actually impact certain areas within the city, which the public feels necessary, which needs a cleanup. So we haven't started that yet, we're thinking maybe April, May, somewhere around there. There's still some, some conversation, but that's our direction. Here's Officer Howdy, I'll go and turn over to him. Well, hello, everybody. So just to touch base on uncovered loads, unsecured loads, it falls under the same state statute with uncovered and unsecured. So on the citations I've been issuing, if it's completely unsecure, if there's stuff flying out, they're receiving a citation. When this first rolled out, I was out there giving verbal warnings, letting me know what was going on. And now, we do have discretionary on citations. So if they're making an attempt to tie down a load, but there's still possibility of trash flying everywhere, they could receive a warning. So that's what I'm seeing out there. I'm getting a lot of positive feedback from people, even though I'm issuing them citations because they know it's an issue and they know it's a problem. There's other people, of course, that are, they're not happy with receiving a citation, but I do try to explain to everybody that I do issue a citation, the reason behind it. So most of the time, after my citation's issued, I get a thank you, have a good day from both parties, me and them. So just to, you know, put that out there. In the statute, I just wanted to also mention that the way it reads is if there's a possibility of any kind of trash or any kind of debris, even though it's tied down or is the net over, if it's a possibility of it to fly out, it could be cited under that ordinance. So I do try to educate the public on them, on that, how we're dealing with that. And the pamphlets, poster boards, etc. that we're working on, we did have a meeting with Mr. Brown and the officials at the, at the dump. We are going to put the ordinance out there on their guard check, listing what the ordinance is and we're going to try to get it big enough so they can read it. And we also want to have pamphlets that we can hand out there. So we are, we are in the process of working on that right now and like Chief Portillo said, we have sat down, I've sat down with Judge Lanny and talked about picking up trash for community service hours and that could tie in hand in hand with the Top No Mass campaign. So if there's a certain area that people aren't wanting to, to pick up, we can go ahead and get that issue taken care of as well. So that's all I have and I have a smile to go with.
Any, any questions from the council? Counselor Bederson?
I have a question. I have a question. I don't know if this still stands, but when, one of the things that I've noticed is there's a lot of folks that have boards or pipes sticking way out beyond their truck bed. And are they supposed to have a flag on that or something? Because that seems to be one of the things that, it is a load, so I don't, I'm sure that that's covered under the uncovered and secured load, but that's something that's been concerning me, because it's like all of a sudden you realize that these pipes are now, you know, that much closer to you, over your car, paying the, you know, but they don't, they're not putting a, you know, some sort of red, or, you know, some sort of flag that they actually have that sticking way out, and that seems to be one of the things that's occurring more often. So should the public call if they see that as well?
Yes. So like, like councilman said, it's a, you know, it does have to be flagged. Another day, I'll give you an example, I pulled over a forerunner that had an 18-foot piece of PVC through the back window, through the front window, all the way out. You know, it was secure because the windows were holding it up, but it wasn't flagged, so I did educate them on that. So yes, anytime something you guys see something like that, give us a call, if not me, another patrol officer will handle it.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the--
I did want to say something. You know, we had this meeting as a result of a discussion you and I had a couple days before that, because of the uncovered load issues, when I guess you were picking up trash and you're still having issues. So we met with the staff at the landfill, and what they've been doing is they've been, they've identified that they're seeing a lot more of the loads being covered. We're still going to have problems, of course, now we're getting into the windy season, so we're going to see it even more. So they are seeing it more, the tarps, they're selling, they're almost out of tarps, they had to reorder tarps, things like that. But illegal dumping is still an issue. I didn't realize it, but probably 15 minutes before you went to my office, I had just met with facility maintenance. We were working on a strategy to block some, block access to some roads that people have been using at Scott Park to dump illegally. So we're still having problems with illegal dumping two miles down the road from the dump. So if they're not going to dump it legally, they're not going to dump it legally, so we're just going to have to continue to work on it. But as you can see, the police department is doing, doing a lot to try to work towards getting that end game of trying to get as much compliance as possible.
Thank you for following up on that, Mr. Brown. Just general information for the public, we have a city ordinance, and I think there's a $100 fine for not covering your load, and then that coupled with $60 court costs is a $160 fine. And so when we were first talking about this program, we knew that if we came down so hard that everybody who went out there with an uncovered load got a $160 ticket, we might be seeing more illegal dumping. And so the way the program was designed is first Officer Howdy was given verbal warnings, and then he was given citations, but he would tell the person with the uncovered load that if they would buy a tarp for $10, and that's a heck of a deal for those tarps, and if they would take that citation and the receipt for buying the tarp to the, to the judge, the magistrate judge, that she would dismiss the charges. And I think it's having some effect, you know, it's going to be a never-ending battle, but I'm noticing a difference out there on Ridge Road. I don't know if it's just my imagination, but it does look cleaner to me. And it's going to be a never-ending battle, and while I'm on the topic, I want to thank all of the community members who've been involved in picking up litter. There's several different groups in town that are now actively going around and picking up litter. And, you know, it's an important thing, when we have people coming to town, what if they see our streets littered? What is, what kind of message does that tell them about our community and the people in our community? It's like inviting someone to your house and, and having a dirty house, what are they going to think about you? So we want people to have a good first impression, and we appreciate all of the help that you guys are doing and that the community members are doing to try and battle this litter issue. Councilor Ray, it looks like you had a comment.
May it be a netting answer or just a tarp?
I'm sorry?
May it be also a net or just a tarp?
Well, in, in the way the states, the statue reads, is if they net it, and there's potential for trash flying out, because I don't know if you noticed, but on those spider web nets, there's all different sizes. There's a tight net and a big net, you know? So I actually, I'll give you guys an example, I did give a guy a citation on Saturday that had, he used his net half, or I guess properly halfway, I guess I would say, because he had netted it all down and threw a few bags on top. So, you know, he received the citation, I explained to him what needed to be done, and so yes, if you're using that and use it correctly, you'll be fine. If you're using that incorrectly, you can still receive a citation.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Chief, and thank you. Mr. Brown, you have another item, don't you?
Yes, Mayor, council, as you know, after Chief Reynolds retired, we started the process to, to replace him. As part of that process, I set up an interview committee made up of, well, it ended up being six individuals. We received 51 applications, 22 of them met the minimum requirements. They were all reviewed by Celia Domenech, our personnel director, and so we had a minimum of 22 that, that could be evaluated and reviewed for, for further discussion. The committee went and, and reviewed all the applications, they narrowed down the, the group down to five individuals that they wanted to interview. They interviewed the five individuals, they ranked them, scored them and everything, and they, they recommended two individuals for me to, for me to do a final interview. One of them was interim chief Portillo, and I, I'm sorry, I can't remember the guy's name. But after some input from the community and some, some checking up on, on the other individuals' history, I decided to, to not go forward with that interview. What I did was I went back and I pulled all the information that the committee had put together, Celia had put together, everyone, and, and I went by the rankings, and initially I requested that the committee, if they could resubmit an additional recommendation for me to interview. They didn't feel that they were comfortable with recommending anybody else. After reviewing all the information that was presented, I completely agreed with them 100%. Chief Portillo is, was far and above and beyond the, the best applicant. He knows the community, he knows the law, he's actually even gone back to school, he's taken leadership programs, he's been working extremely hard, and he's proven himself to be very capable and competent. So I want to say that, oh, and I do want to say that this is a decision that I made, not the town council. It's my responsibility to hire and fire everybody other than myself. You do that. And I just wanted to say, you know, this is my decision, but the process that was used has been proven. We've actually gone to federal court with our process. One amendment that I am probably going to bring to the council is, in the future, is that maybe we do an internet search on the background for supervisors and department heads prior to bringing them in for an interview, and that might alleviate some headaches. But I just want to congratulate Freddie on the excellent job that he's done, and I look forward to working with him.
Let us be the first to congratulate you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
You've got a few words to say, I think.
I do, I do. Be short and sweet. Mayor, council, town management, in June 2018, I was afforded the opportunity to be interim police chief for the Town of Silver City. I talked about building aquifers already in place and moving the department in the right direction. I want to continue that trend and continue building public trust by establishing a good working relationship with everyone in the community. We will continue to be a very proactive police department in all, in all aspects of the job. I will continue to give my 110% every single day. I want to take the time to thank each and every one of you for the opportunity to be a police chief for the Town of Silver City. I also want to take the time to thank supervisors and mentors that I've had throughout the years, which includes retired chief Ed Reynolds. I have tremendous amount of respect for retired chief Ed Reynolds, and for that, I'm very truly grateful and blessed for this opportunity again. I want to thank all of my staff at the police department. They truly understand the importance of going above and beyond. They are hardworking individuals who are very dedicated to the department and to the community. I want to take the time to thank my family, my sisters Brenda, Diana, Crystal, and Ashley for all their support, my father and mother, Alfred and Angie Portillo, who have always been tremendous role models throughout my life. As my parents saying goes, whatever you do in life, you better do your best and make it work, which is a better higher option. I've always lived by that, and, and I intend to instill that in my own children. I want to thank my mother-in-law Linda and father-in-law Mike, who have also been very supportive, Malcolm Rubin, who I'm, I'm very close to, who's retired from the Van County Sheriff's Department as a lieutenant, I also have a tremendous amount of respect for. Last but not least, I do want to thank my wife Candace. She supports me in every way possible. She was also born and raised in this community, and also wants what's best for the community she lives in. Again, thank you. I look forward to working with all of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, next on the agenda is unfinished business, item number 10, which is the approval slash disapproval of ordinance number 1277, and ordinance amending chapter 6, animals, Article 1, Section 6-1, definitions, section 6-34A, authority of town manager and animal control officer, chapter 6-55B, administrative enforcement citations, and chapter 32, nuisances, a new section, 32-14, animals of the municipal code of the Town of Silver City. Councilor Edison sponsored this ordinance, so I'll turn the time over to her.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to ask Esu Tony to come forward and also discuss this. I just want to briefly state that, that this is to enable our animal control officer to actually do her duties and not have to do combious amounts of paperwork or to request that an officer, a police officer, come to assist with the citations for public nuisance. So if you would elaborate a little bit more, I mean, it's just moving, and I know that Mr. Sciveron can explain it as well, but this is moving certain sections out of the animal ordinance and into very specific areas, nuisances, so that you can complete all the tasks and all the duties that you have as an animal control officer.
It's on.
Okay.
I think Mr. Sciveron had said before it was just housekeeping, that somewhere public nuisance had gotten deleted in the ordinance, and so we're trying to use it again. Have the definitions, but not the citable offense.
Mr. Sciveron, if you want to elaborate about how this will allow the animal control officer to actually issue citations for the public nuisances that are listed?
Well, apparently there was a, a difference in interpretation, and the court that does the judging of these cases felt that the language was ambiguous regarding the animal control officer's ability to issue citations for nuisance, because it wasn't specifically stated. While I may disagree with the interpretation, I felt that clarification was a good idea in any case. So in consultation with you and with Ms. Tony, we came up with something that we know will satisfy the court. We've reduced any ambiguities and made it clear that, that the animal control officer has the authority to issue citation under her authority under, as animal control officer, and also in situations where there's public nuisance. So that the description as being housekeeping and clarification covers it.
I just want to reiterate, thank you very much, that this was already in the animal ordinance, it's just that there was this miss, this difference in interpretation. So the placement in the proper location will allow her, she is certified as an animal control officer, she has gone through all the training, this is, you know, that's, she is in, within the police department, so this allows her to do things like we've had in the past, dog attacks and bites where I think that the animal control officer at that time wasn't really able to issue anything. Every time that I've spoken with an animal control officer, even before Ms. Tony, that I know that they felt that they always had to call in the officers to do and issue the citations. So this places it right in your bailiwick, and, and I think that that's what we're trying to do here. So unless there's something that the chief, that the chief would like to add, that will explain to the public that this is really putting things in the place so that she can actually do her job in any future animal control officer.
Yeah, absolutely. Animal control officer, I commend her tremendously, she's very proactive, always looking for solutions in the community, and this is one of the things that she found that would hinder her job. So this is, you know, we definitely need to move forward with this, and I support her, so it makes her job easier. It actually makes the whole department's job easier, since she's able to do it as well.
Thank you. The last thing I would just like to say is, most of the comments that I've received that are, that they want this approved has to do with, actually with dogs. And that's about, I would say, out of 10, 10 out of 10 right now, and everything has been about, and the concern about, really dogs, dogs running at large, dogs creating a, a public nuisance. And that's, I think that that is what actually made this kind of move forward with some of the issues we've been having with dogs in a couple parts of, of the city, if I remember correctly. That's really what kind of brought this to the fore. So with that being said, Mayor, turn it back to you.
Any questions or comments from the council? Are there any questions or comments from the general public? Mr. Sexton, I think you had one.
Thank you again. I just wanted to address some questions or some concerns that the, I have and the Grand County Beekeepers have. We discussed this ordinance. As I said earlier, a lot of towns across the United States use a nuisance law as a way to address the concerns of honeybees in a city. It's not a bad approach if it's done right, and I just want to make it, you know, that the town aware that if, if this ordinance would apply to bees, and maybe you have no intention of that, but the general public might think it's okay to call the animal control officer if there's, if they think there's a threat of honeybees in the neighborhood. So the way this is written right now, the animal control officer-- So the way this is written right now, the animal control officer would have complete authority to take care of the situation, they could impound the animals. And I'm not sure, I'm trying to look up Section 6103, what it means, because they suggest that there's more wording on what it means to impound animals. So I don't know what happens if you try and cannot impound an animal, you might decide that other actions are necessary. So we would like to make the town aware that when a nuisance law is used to control honeybees, they usually give the beekeeper the first option of remedying the situation, to remove the bees rather than having an officer remove the bees first. So that's, so my first question is, is it intended that this ordinance would be used to address the concerns of honeybees in the town?
Mr. Scavron?
First of all, this particular ordinance was drafted without a focus on bees and honeybee keepers. The reaction, this was a reaction to an interpretation from the municipal court judge, and we reviewed it and saw there were some ambiguities. This does not change the law. It clears up the placement of certain provisions, and our focus was on the clearing up of ambiguities. Nuisance has always been available for any act that affects a large number of people. So whether we had done this ordinance or not, if there was a bee swarm, that would be a public nuisance because it would endanger the public. Now, there's different ways of dealing with nuisance. One is if it's quite dangerous, immediate action can be taken to protect the town. In situations where, oh, nobody got hurt and the bees are back in their hive, the provisions, under the administrative provisions of the code, it's the general practice of the animal control officer to knock on your door and find a way for you to remediate the problem. The priority is always on gaining administrative compliance, working with an owner, working with the person that may be causing the nuisance, and getting it abated. And there's usually, if there's no immediate public harm, then 10 days is the normal length of time. If the nuisance has not been abated within 10 days, then you can expect a citation and stronger enforcement action. And under general law, the town can always take an action to abate a nuisance. And impounding was not, the idea of impounding a beehive is not something that's been heavily discussed, but it would be within the purview, I would think, to seize whatever to abate the nuisance. Now, I understand that there may be another, more clarified ordinance that specifically deals with bees and specifically mentions the applicability of the nuisance statute. One of the major purposes of having a code book is to make sure that people can read it and understand what their duties are and where they can get in trouble. So when there's ambiguities or new things developing, we try to work very hard in making it very readable to the public. We don't use any Latin words, and we try to publicize it, and we have, the council usually has a very significant discussion on it, and they always instruct staff to provide them with the best research, and then public input is always encouraged. So there may be down the road, an ordinance that comes out that may clarify the applicability of nuisance to bees, but even without the clarification, the nuisance ordinance does apply.
So that's reassuring. I would like to suggest or like to see some of your language used in this document so that, you know, because the way I read it is that we could not, no person could interfere with the officer, but it sounds like you have 10 days to have a discussion to remedy, to abate the situation.
The animal control officer's, her priority is not giving citations. Her priority is to protect the public, to educate the public, and then if the public is obstinate, doesn't want to take the common sense necessary steps, then a harder approach has to be taken. But this particular ordinance, the focus of it was not beekeepers. The focus of it was to clear up some ambiguities, and it's my understanding that there may be another ordinance down the road, which your input would be welcome on, of course, that would specifically talk to the obligations, public safety obligations, of beekeepers.
Right. My final comment is that the language in this ordinance is under animals, and the rest of it is, it could easily include honeybees, and then depending on how the officer reacts or the person making the complaint reacts, this could be, this could be not the best way to respond to bees. So it's, to me, it's vague, and I'm just making it aware to the town that a situation could come up, which, so my final suggestion or invitation is that the bee club has mentoring sessions where we get together at somebody's house and we go into a beehive, and if the officer wanted to attend, they could get an idea what a friendly beehive looks like. And so if they get into the field and, you know, we could probably find an unfriendly beehive to let her know the difference.
I'm sure that the animal control officer would be very welcome to that approach. There's no, the approach has not been one of law and order and let's strike down something that we don't like. The motivating factor has always been public safety, and let's make it clear and let's work with the public. That's been my instruction, so I pass that on to you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from the general public?
My name is Sharon McDonald. I live on the most extraordinarily beautified College Avenue, and it is a really magnificent redo. But I have lived in that house for about 11 years, and I have dogs of my own, and I was called to the carpet for my elderly dog who has dog zymers, as I call it, who goes into a trance and barks. I, when notified, I saw to it that that dog was restrained from the area where he goes into a trance and barks, so I certainly understand the value of the citation as an educational tool. We have in our neighborhood renters who have come in and brought two small toy and miniature Austrian shepherds. They have extremely high-pitched voices, and even though the family is in the house, they will leave them outside yipping, and I don't mean barking, I mean yip, yip, yip. And this can go on for hours, and this can very well, very much impact the enjoyment of my backyard and the yard of nearby neighbor who is not here tonight but had requested that I come. And there's yet another neighbor on College Avenue who can clearly hear this yipping at the front of his house. I can hear it when I'm up on College Avenue through the houses and a whole block or so away. So I really would request that ordinance 1277 be revised and clarified because in our neighborhood, we have nuisance dogs, and they very often are the dogs of renters. The more permanent residents, of which there are quite a few, have been fairly compliant when this has been brought to their attention. But, you know, not everything's been taken care of. Are there any other questions or things that anyone would want from me?
Any questions or comments?
Ms. Scavron, would you just make sure that folks know that we don't distinguish between residents that are renting and permanent residents, that this applies to everyone within the town?
The activity that you're complaining about is already covered in the animal paragraphs, so it's just a matter for you to get the animal control officer to witness what's going on, and then I'm sure she'll take the appropriate action. You might want to talk to her now while she's here.
I think that's a great idea. Thank you very much, and I will do so. I appreciate your listening.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments from the general public before we move on? I don't see any, so do I hear a motion? Councilor Edison?
I move to approve of ordinance number 1277 and ordinance amending Chapter 6 Animals, Article 1, Section 6-1, Definitions, Section 6-34a Authority of Town Manager and Animal Control Officer, Chapter 6-55b Administrative Enforcement Citations, and Chapter 32, Nuisances, a new section, 32-14 Animals of the Municipal Code of the Town of Silver City.
Thank you. Is there a second? Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please, then.
Councilor Edison?
Aye.
Councilor Ammon Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Connor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
This is my?
Yes.
May I have a short break?
My apologies.
Okay, do I hear a second to that?
Mr. Anderson, second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor of taking a very short break?
Very short break.
Say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Told in our meeting, back to order. I'd like to introduce the newest citizen to Silver City, Mr. Pete Stubbin, who's from New York. Mr. Stubbin, stand and let us recognize you. He just bought a home, he just bought a home on Chihuahua Hill, and he's a commodity trader, and he does it all with his cellphone. Now, thank you for being here. Okay. Moving right along, the first item of new business now that we need to address is 11B, the approval/disapproval of a public celebration permit application and waiver of NMSA 1978, Section 60-6B-10 for alcohol service near a church for the Continental Divide Trail Days event on April 26, 2019, with alcohol service from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the Power and Light Press, 601 North Bullard Street, Unit F, Silver City, New Mexico. Liquor license holder, La Esperanza Vineyard LLC, license number 6148100, Delaune San Lorenzo, New Mexico, 88041. Who's here to present this? Okay, come right up and identify yourself.
Carol Martin and I am.
Would you press the button there on the face?
The white one. There we are. Carol Martin and I am representing the Continental Divide Coalition at this point for the application for alcohol beer and wine to be served that night at the Power and Press Building inside the hub. The La Esperanza will provide the security, check IDs, and attach wristbands. No alcohol will be allowed outside of the building itself. And if you have any questions, let me know. I think the paperwork has already been submitted, and I just need to go to the letter and the paperwork and send it in to the State Department of Alcohol Gaming.
Thank you, Ms. Martin. Any questions or comments from the council? Do I hear a motion? Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve of a public celebration permit application and waiver of NMSA 1978, Section 60-6B-10 for alcohol service near a church for the Continental Divide Trail Days event on April 26, 2019, with alcohol service from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at the Power and Light Press, 601 North Bullard Street, Unit F, Silver City, New Mexico. Liquor license holder, La Esperanza Vineyard LLC, license number 6148100, Delaune San Lorenzo, New Mexico, 88041.
Is there a second?
Sir Mayor.
Councilor Connor?
I have a second. Got motion, it's stated.
We have a motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed nay, motion carries. Next item is 11C, the approval/disapproval of two public celebration permits for the Little Toad Creek's Toad Fest Takeover on April 27, 2019, with alcohol service from 2:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. in the alley behind the Little Toad Creek Restaurant at 200 North Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico, 88061. Liquor license holder, one, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Brewery, license number 63013, and two, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Brewery, license number 67085203, South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico. I think Mr. Andy Houseley is going to make this presentation.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Andrew Houseley. I am the general manager of Little Toad Creek Brewery and Distillery. And no, I have not been drinking. It's the juniper bombs and the shots of Benadryl that are affecting me today. What this event is, is we do this in conjunction with the New Mexico Brewers Guild. They bring in different beer cats from across the state. We will be closing the alley immediately behind Little Toad Creek. We will supply the fencing and the security as well to keep people from entering the alley or hopefully not falling off into the ditch. That'll all be covered, and then they will just have access into the building alone. No sidewalks, no streets would be closed for this event, and we'd appreciate your consideration for this.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
Please.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion? Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve of two public celebration permits for Little Toad Creek's Toad Fest Takeover on April 27, 2019, with alcohol service from 2:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. in the alley behind Little Toad Creek Restaurant at 200 North Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico. Liquor license number one, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Brewery, license number 63013, and number two, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Brewery, license number 67085203, South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico.
Do I hear a second?
Sir Mayor.
Councilor Connor?
I have a second. Got motion, it's stated.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion carries.
Next item is 11D, the approval/disapproval of two public celebration permits and waiver of NMSA 1978, Section 60-6B-10 for alcohol service near a church for the Tour de la Hila VIP Beer Garden on May 4, 2019, with alcohol service from 9:00 VIP Beer Garden on May 4, 2019, with alcohol service from noon to 5:30 p.m. at the hub at 601 North Bullet, Silver City, New Mexico. Liquor license holder, one, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Distillery, license number 63013, and two, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Brewery, license number 67085203, South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico. Mr. Brennan?
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I'm Jack Brennan, Vice Director for Tour de Hila, and again, we're having the Tour de Hila on May 1st through May 5th, 2019, and on Saturday, we'll be doing a VIP Beer Garden and Distillery Garden for our title sponsors or major sponsors. Little Toad Creek will be providing the fencing and security for this event, and hope to have your support. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
Yes, sir.
Do I hear a motion? Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve of two public celebration permits and a waiver of NMSA 1978, Section 60-6B-10, for alcohol service near a church for a Tour de Hila VIP Garden on May 4, 2019, with alcohol service from noon to 5:30 p.m. at the hub at 601 North Bullet Street, Silver City, New Mexico. Liquor license holders, one, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Distillery, license number 63013, and two, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Brewery, license number 67085203, South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
Come here.
Councilor Connor?
I'll second that motion, it's stated.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next is 11E, the approval slash disapproval of two public celebration permits for the Tour de Hila Beer Garden on May 4, 2019, with alcohol service from noon to 7:00 p.m. at 820 North Bullet, Silver City, New Mexico. Liquor license holder, one, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Distillery, license number 63013, and two, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Brewery, license number 67085203, South Mill Road, Silver City, New Mexico. Again, Mr. Brennan?
Mayor and city councilors, again, we have a beer garden in conjunction with the Tour de Hila for that date. Little Toad Creek will be, again, supplying the, the fencing, the security, and the service at the beer garden, and we ask for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the council? Do I hear a motion? Councilor Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve of two public celebration permits for the Tour de Hila Beer Garden on May 4, 2019, with alcohol service from noon to 7:00 p.m. at 820 North Bullet Street, North Bullet, Silver City, New Mexico. Liquor license holder, number one, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Distillery, license 63013, and two, Little Toad Creek LLC, DBA, Little Toad Creek Brewery, license 67085203, South Mill Road, Silver City.
Thank you, Councilor Ray. Is there a second?
Come here.
Councilor Connor?
I'll second that motion, it's stated.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight, and we hope you have a good rest of the evening. This concludes the business of the town of Silver City. Do I hear a motion?
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Smith?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
I second it.
Councilor Ray? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. We are hereby adjourned.